This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Elpina City Council Meeting of December 6, 2021. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
Councilman Osmond.
Here.
And Mayor Wollabour.
Here. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmond.
Yes.
And Mayor Wollabour.
Any proposed modifications to set agenda? All right, approval of the minutes for regular session of November 15, 2021. Any issues or changes or... Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is be the only time this evening that the public is allowed to speak.
My name's Marshall Simmons. I live at 1260 Lake Shore Drive in Harrisville. And the reason I wanted to attend tonight's meeting is because I haven't been a former resident of Elpina, an Elpina township. My family owns seven lots at Evergreen Cemetery, beginning in 1917. I watch over those lots and I watch over another 11 lots belonging to family and friends. My comments are about the investment of the 1 million-plus balance in the perpetual care fund. I believe strongly that at least 20% or more of that money should remain in a savings account to be easily accessible, okay? Any interest earned on an account belongs to that account. Otherwise, that account will diminish due to inflation. Evergreen Cemetery represents the very fabric of the lives in early years of this city. Previous council members are buried there. Most of those people up there are buried there. Our first teachers, firefighters, law officers, veterans, saloon keepers, as well as the lady that died in 1927 after being overcome by fumes in her place of employment. We understand the importance of preserving the area from their convictions and their expectations. The First Cemetery Ordinance was written in 1874 and it expresses the comments and events. It expresses our concerns. The First Ordinance states clearly that the city promises that the grounds, buildings, enclosures, and imperatience are improved and are kept in good condition and repair. It's the people's understanding of the whole area of the cemetery, not just their grave sites there. As you may know, the metal fence and entrance gate was installed in 1907 to replace the deteriorated wooden fence during the same time as the construction of this building. A small portion came from the city funds with the majority coming and being raised in the community. Since 1918, those people buried at Evergreen and their families have contributed to the fund to maintain and improve the graves where their graves are located. The fence is symbolic of their interest to keep the cows, sheep, and deer. It's symbolic of many other items, too. We continue adding, the people have continued adding to the cemetery's care, to the funds for that care. It demonstrates their dedication and appearance of dedication and interest in the appearance of the cemetery. So in a sense, the community has paid forward. And there should be a sense of obligation to our people that have come before us to have maintained that appearance. And that appearance is involved in the fence. People have paid forward. You have more than $1 million in that perpetual care fund. I'm constantly hearing people tell me that you can't touch the funds. The lawyers say you can't touch it. The judge say you can't touch it. Everybody says you can't touch it. But nobody's looking back at history or what the intent of that fund was. And I don't think it should be ignored. Okay, in the early, the early documents. The early documents, uh, thank you. The early documents for the perpetual care to explain the fund, the purpose of the fund. It says, "including" the trees and the grass and the watering and the re-sodding. You can take re-sodding out because it doesn't apply anymore. Re-sodding, filling the opening or the sunken area after the body and the wooden box was gone. We now use vaults so they don't have need for re-sodding. Maybe the grassing, but sodding is an old term. So the, oh, here it is, the perpetual care certificates, the early ones said, "shall include." "Shall include" does not mean limited to. Other aspects have been already mentioned. But the fence and the entrance represent the interest then and now and the concern for protective location for burial. It means it's a welcoming place, an inviting place, a place with special focus on remembering, honoring, and respecting. Our culture uses the term rest in peace and pearly gates. Again, it's conveying a welcoming area. The fence defines that area that was protected and cared for. It's a very visual reminder of that. And stands as the perimeter of a special area, just as church walls do. When you pass through that majestic entrance arch, it's similar to entering a church. It's a profound feeling and focus of attention. The entrances use for funerals and at one time for parades on Memorial Day and 4th of July. Social organizations use the entrance as processions of people's groups such as the Maccabees, Oddfellows, Nathan, and other groups. Now, the entrance and interior of the cemetery do attract other people, photographers, family genealogies, walkers, and visitors. The website Find a Grave has a profound increase on attention to that cemetery. Through that website, people check on their families. So you have to keep that in mind about the issue of abandonment.
You have to finish in 30 seconds, please.
Do I have what?
You have 30 seconds to finish.
Go to where first?
You only have 30 seconds more.
Now it's 10. I wish the council would embrace the return of the cemetery fence, the continued support for the entrance and the arch. It's important to honor the past and honor the people that have accomplished that, just as the city council members did in 1906 and 1907. The money's already there. The majority of the people I meet are interested in Evergreen, are very quiet people. They are not loudly spoken nor wish to be the focus of the proverbial meetings. This is also true for those that attend my cemetery walks and presentations. Just because we're not outspoken doesn't mean we should be minimized. The city council in 1905 have the legacy of the Evergreen fence and gates. You as a group, you have the honor of administering that area and you could have the pride of, could have the pride in returning the fence and the gates. Thank you.
Angie Skiba, 635 River. I am not sure if I understood at the last meeting that you were contemplating the investment of the $1 million, but did not make that plan. Is that correct? Did not make the decision. So I'm concerned that we have $1 million in the perpetual care fund. And before it's completely committed for investment, we, I feel we need a detailed review for possible use of the replacement of the fence by the city attorney and to delve into the fine details of the possible use. Steve said, I spoke to Steve before the meeting today, that the way things are written, that it appears that it's probably not able to be used that way. But I want an in-depth investigation before we invest $1 million. And I also, if we as the city and the money that's been able to be invested, for example, any contract that you write with anyone else, you're able to make the details work in your favor. If, if we as the city are investing this type of money, you have the right to write in a contract that you will have access to part of that money. And they can make that exception, or they don't need to accept all your money. And I'm going to guess that they will take your money. Say you, say you possibly invest $500,000 and then you would keep the $500,000 in the other account if we're able to use it. Work on replacing that fence. There are many people in Elpina that are very upset the fence was removed and they want to know where it is, why it's removed. And you try and answer that question, but it's not my place to answer, say call here and ask. So there are many people that are very upset that it has not been addressed and has not been taken care of. But I feel if we do proceed in investing part of that money, at least you write it in there and you make the options in any contract. You do have those choices. So I would make that work for the city, not just necessarily for their portion. But please investigate that before that money is invested. Thank you.
Angie, and just, I'm just going to comment really quick for you and Marsha since you're both right here.
Yes.
We've investigated. That, that money, it's state statute tells us what we can and can't do with that money. I don't want to discuss it right now, but it's limited to zero, what we can do with that money. That money has to be invested and we can only spend the interest off of whatever the investment is, which is, which is why we're trying to invest it somewhere where we will make the most interest. So, and Anna, maybe when she brings it back to, to council for that final decision, whenever that is, she can quote again, again, the statute that basically tells us what we can and can't do with it. And perhaps you'll log in or be here for that as well.
If I could get that in writing before that, I'd appreciate that.
It'll be in the city, city packet, or you can email it to...
All that information is in the last meeting's packet. The bill is in there of what we can actually spend it on. So that would be a good resource to check out. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it was, I knew it was something that we read just recently. So it was in the last packet. Anyone else live? Like to speak to council? Anybody on the line? It is who? Oh, okay. Kevin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Just, I was there in November and in person. And just wanted to let you know I was here and would be happy to discuss when we get to the draft marijuana ordinance. I, you know, I said that I would circle back with the city attorney between the last meeting and this one. And this man kind of snuck up on me. I was tied up with, with a number of other urgent matters. But in general, I think that this ordinance is, is good and it's for progress. There are some things that I would suggest maybe you reconsider or think about. One would be the, the local licensing authority that kind of creates a new level of bureaucracy that I've seen in other ordinances elsewhere in the state and not seen that work well anywhere. So, and at a minimum, if you did want to go that route, there would be some cleanup because there are lots of places where it says the clerk has certain powers that this section, this new proposed section would put in this new bureaucratic entity. And I'll just leave it for there for now and don't want to get too much down to the nitty gritty details. But, you know, in general, I think this is a great ordinance. There's a couple little things that I would suggest you consider or reconsider in terms of minor tweaks based on, you know, experience elsewhere in the state and seeing what has worked and what hasn't. But I'm, I'm happy we're even having these conversations and happy to be part of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Anyone else out there? Charlie? All right, thank you. No public hearing this evening, so we have a consent agenda that's relatively lengthy. So I will get through that. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $631,763.68. B is the approval of consulting services for the ARPA grant. C is a council appointment of Nicholas Lee to the recreational advisory board for a three-year term expiring on December 1, 2024. D is the approval of a 2022 council meeting schedule. E is the approval of a Memorial Day, 4th of July, and Christmas parades held within the city limits in 2022. F is the approval of a budget amendment request to reduce general fund balance by $11,322 due to a discovery of a budget error. G is approval of a budget amendment request to increase general fund balance by $22,662 due to the personal property tax reimbursement being higher than budgeted and to amend the budget after review of the October monthly financial reports. H is PA 152 insurance opt-out. I is the Alpina County Youth and Recreation Grant Agreement for Culligan Plaza. J is Economic Development Administration Grant Application Submittal and Solutions. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmond? Mayor Wollabour? And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have report of officers. First is the 2022 Property and Liability Insurance Bid Recommendation. Anna is here for that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On November 18, the city received and opened bids for property and liability insurance. The request for proposal was emailed to three firms as well as posted on the city's website with three proposals received as follows. The first bid was from Alpina Agency, who works with Argonaut Insurance Company and Travelers Property and Casualty. Their base premium was $149,998 with an optional bid of $143,999. The second bid was from Lappin Agency. Their carrier is Tokyo Marine and HCC Insurance Group. The base bid was $130,363 for year one, and then second and third years would change with exposures. The third bid was from the Michigan Municipal League and their carrier is the MML Liability and Property Pool. So they are self-insured. The base bid is $139,948. They only do one-year policies, so they don't have a three-year policy as, as we had requested in the bid specs. City manager Smolinski and I conducted a review of the proposals and decided that we would like to move forward with the proposal from the MML as it best meets the needs of the city. I called the three listed references and only received one return call, which was from the city of Traverse City clerk. He stated that their city has been insured with the MML since 1986 and has had a great experience to date. Their claims process is consistent and timely. Coverages are sufficient and exclusions are not overboard. He performs a comprehensive market analysis every three years to be sure that the MML's rates are in line with other companies and found them to be the best around. He said that the premiums do increase about 2% to 3% each year and he highly recommends insuring with MML. An added benefit that the MML offers is the payment of dividends. The pool dividend for members five years and over renewing in 2022 is 10% of their 2021 renewal premium. In year one, we would receive 10% of the calculated 10% dividend. So it'd be 10% of the $13,994. In year two, it would increase to 25%. In years three, four, and five, it would be 50, 75%, and 100%, respectively. Hypothetically, if we would have been with the MML for five years and paid $139,948 in 2021, the city's 2022 dividend would be $13,994. If we join in 2021, our first-year portion in '22 will be $1,399. I'd like to point out that the MML offers $100,000 sewer backup liability, while the other two bidders offer $1 million. I was concerned about this, so I reached out to the MML and was informed that in the last four years, there were 107 sewer backup claims for a total of 1.1 million. Only two of those claims actually exceeded $100,000. So having this knowledge, I still feel comfortable moving forward with MML. Another concern that I looked into was the coverage of ice damage to our docks. The MML claims manager said that although there is a property exclusion for impact damage to docks, piers, and wharves, they have paid claims to docks and piers. Coverage is based on the facts and merits of the claim. Other benefits and differences that were noted include significantly higher limits of liability for municipal general liability, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, and automobile liability. The deductibles are also lower on numerous coverages or nonexistent. The pool ensures more than 433 public entity members, 139 fire departments, 170 law enforcement agencies, 2,195 police officers, 5,772 miles of streets and roads, 6,950 vehicles, 195 water utilities, 218 sewer utilities, 24 municipal marinas, 206 water service operations, 17 dams, and has $5 billion of property values. It is my recommendation as clerk treasurer finance director to award the property and liability bid to the Michigan Municipal League for an annual premium of $139,948 for 2022.
And it's just the first question that came to mind is one I think that we got answered, but I wanted to ask it again. Not all insurance companies are apples to apples. It's usually an apple to an orange. Can you highlight for council some of the differences that you see between this particular policy that they're going for and some of the others that we have?
I knew that you would ask, or someone would. So I did a comparison, and like you said, you know, it is hard to compare them. So as part of our bid specs, we had a questionnaire in there. And I transferred those questions onto a spreadsheet and just put the responses from each bidder. Some of the differences that I noticed, as I had mentioned in my memo, for the municipal general liability, public officials, law enforcement, automobile liabilities, all of those limits of liability are $10 million each. Whereas with the other two, it's 1 million per occurrence or a $3 million aggregate limit. So that means if there's more than one claim in a year, it would max out at 3 million. Some of the other differences that I noticed, our, our comprehensive coverage on vehicles is only $250 deductible, whereas with the other two is $1,000. As I mentioned, sewer backup is lower at $100,000, but I think in the explanation that was given from MML that it is justified. See what else here? Property coverage, the deductibles with the other two are 5,000 and with MML it's only 500. There's no deductibles for many of the crime coverage, including employee dishonesty, loss inside the premise, loss outside the premises, money orders, and counterfeit paper. And also our marine operators' legal liability is $10 million of coverage, whereas the other two are $1 million. The property, I think I already mentioned that, about the property coverage deductible. Building and personal property, so contents, $500 deductible with MML. Nothing is listed with Alpina Agency and then 5,000 with Lappin Agency. Loss. There's a lot of highlights on here. I apologize. Boiler and machinery coverage, it's $1,000 deductible with Lappin, 5,000 with Alpina Agency, 500 with MML.
Vehicles, maybe?
Vehicles? Yeah, so I believe the collision is still 1,000. Sure why I don't have it printed out. It's 1,000 and then the only one that's different is the, the comprehensive with MML is 250. Does that answer your question?
Go on.
Yeah.
No, because bids and stuff like that, I usually like the lower one, but sometimes it's like as we've done in past on other different vehicles, prepping out vehicles and always the lowest prices and usually the best deal in the long run. So reading, you know, what I, we went over here on the memo and such. I thought this actually sounded, hearing that, sounded like a better long-term fit for what we're looking for in that. That's just my opinion, of course, but just wanted to understand it a little bit.
Yeah. Some additional research that I did earlier today. I was trying to figure out how much we've paid in deductibles to Lappin Agency over the course of the last three years that we've been insured with them. And it's at least $17,000. And I ran those same incidents with the MML and they said it'd be $12,000. So with Lappin Agency, it's at least 17. There might be a little bit more, but I didn't get an answer in time for this meeting. I think that the dividends is, is a, is a very nice benefit. We have workers' comp insurance with them and that, that also reduces our premium for that as well.
Kind of like a...
We've been insured with them for a long time, so we're always getting that benefit. And once we get up to about year four, we should be below the low bid. We should be like in the 120 high range.
Okay. And the, every insurance company, if I understand correctly, will review all of your claims to set your premium for the next year? Is that, is that common practice where they kind of look at all the different claims that maybe you've put on and to reset your...
Oh, I'm not sure how that works. Connie Munson with MML is available online. Maybe she could answer that question for us?
Sure.
What was the question again?
With the rates that are set, is it a review of all of the expenses or payouts that we've had in the year prior? Is that how that works?
How we, meaning how we do our rates?
Yes.
Your, your rates are congregated by the pool based upon the entire program's history with losses. So then, after that, after we have our rates set, we actually have an actuarial firm that helps us determine what the rate should be from year to year. Then our underwriter has scheduled credits and you get merits in a credit form for your loss history. And so bring the whole thing across from your base rate, then you've got your credits applied to it. And that comes out to be where the premium falls. And we have the ability to adjust those up or down to keep your premium down.
I did also speak to Alan Berg, our assessor, on another topic. And we just got talking about this bid recommendation today. And he knows of some municipalities that insure with MML. And he said he's had nothing but a positive experience. He has nothing bad at all to say about them.
Good reference. Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Ray. Anyone else? Questions? Yes? I had several questions and they were kind of up to that final spreadsheet from what I had this morning. So... I had this morning, so I'm comfortable with that. Other questions on that? Right, okay, so. Let me see, I move we award the property and liability bid to Michigan Municipal League for the annual premium of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars. See, I may run back to the desk.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Waldorah?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. Next up, we have the second reading of ordinance 21-465, which amends the city of Alpina zoning ordinance articles 2, 5, and 7.
Policy, unless somebody specifically asked me to read it, but this mainly deals with food truck and food truck park, where they're located. But I think that's time to appear, the fine was also available. I'm not sure if he's on there tonight. But this also basically cleaned up and made it easier to read where some of the other business establishments can be located, for instance, coffee shops, restaurants, food drive-throughs, and that nature. And it lays out where they're permitted by right or they might be permitted by special. So it's basically a restatement in a little more readable form of what was in the ordinance, and also say adding the food truck and the food truck park. So I would just need a vote yea or nay.
Before we do that, I just want to point out that I was expecting Leland Rooney here in my position today, and I had put her name on these, so I will have to strike that on both of the ordinances.
So I move we adopt ordinance 21-465.
Or.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Waldorah?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes. Thank you. Next up is the second reading of ordinance 21-466, which amends the city of Alpina zoning map.
This one is also second reading, and this is to specifically rezone the parcel located at 1010 South 11th Avenue from RM 2 to B1. And I think you have the map that's attached, and also I think there were some questions last time I gave them, but I'll make this consistent on the rest of the block. And so I think that's what it tends to do. I don't know if Montiel has anything that she wanted to add.
No, that's correct. The rest of that section is currently B1, so they're looking to make it B1 basically to the corner.
So I move we adopt ordinance 21-466.
Second.
Mayor Waldorah?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Councilman Osmer?
Thank you. Next up is first reading of ordinance 21-467, which amends Chapter 18, Section 18-1 of the medical marijuana facilities and adult-use marijuana establishments.
This is quite lengthy, and although I'm willing to read it, hoping nobody asks me to read it, I was just going to highlight it. This, obviously, we already have a medical marijuana ordinance. This is going to, in a sense, replace that and adopt both medical and adult-use marijuana and the state one. So Section 18.1 starts out with, under Subchapter A, the purpose and intent, relationship to other laws. Number two is basically stating that this is the legislative intent of this body to adopt these ordinances consistent with state law and the other regulations that are found inside here. There is a relationship to federal law, and one thing that's important to note in here is that nothing in this ordinance is intended to grant immunity from criminal prosecution under federal law. As we all know, marijuana is still a Schedule I control substance, and it's still illegal under federal law. This does also point out that passing this in relationship with the State Marijuana Licensing Act for both medical and adult use. Subsection B basically says we're adopting regular, or excuse me, definitions, and so those are contained in the state laws, state ordinances, or state laws, excuse me, statutes laid out, certain definitions, we're simply adopting those by reference. Number C is the local licensing authority. That is something that Mr. Blair just mentioned when he spoke during public comment. Under two of that section, the number of permitted facilities, I spoke with Rachel about this, at least from my memory, the last time we were here, when we addressed this in a special meeting, there was some talk about excess grower. We had initially prohibited excess growers, but I think Mr. Blair kind of explained to council that, you know, excess grower is defined by state law as somebody who grows in more than five places. And whether it made sense to limit those, or whether we wanted to have more experienced growers also have the opportunity to grow marijuana here. There aren't a whole lot of spots in the city where somebody could be a grower. But we also talked about, you know, is there a number that we could set? And if we did, probably the arbitrary, none of us really have enough experience with, you know, does two make sense, does three make sense, does four make sense? So I changed that to unlimited. Obviously, that's something that was talked about at the last meeting, probably something that I want to consider, whether it should be unlimited or whether you did want to prohibit. There's obviously licensing fees or any fees required, there's applications required, application requirements that were consistent with our previous medical ordinance, medical marijuana ordinance. There's a review process laid out in here. There's a process for if we denied an application, what a person could do to, in a sense, appeal that on a new process ground. This would obviously require us to issue licenses to the government establishment, recreational establishments as well. It has a procedure for how a license could come into forfeiture. It has what occurs on license renewal. It lays out how somebody might be able to transfer a license. This is a revocable privilege, so if the licensee does not comply with the standards, a license could be revoked, could be suspended for a period of time as well. There are some general requirements regarding signage, our cooperation, things of that nature that appeared in our medical ordinance as well. There are certain prohibited acts, for instance, marijuana can't be smoked, so there is the authority of the city to inspect licensed premises. There's also a penalty section, a violation section. If we found that there was some violation of the ordinance that doesn't require revocation of the license, but something that makes somebody in violation, whether it would be a penalty, a financial penalty, they would have to fix that as well if they were in violation of the statute. And that's a, I guess, a brief summary of the ordinance. It's fairly, fairly long and has lots of information.
Billy knows the spelling mistake in the title. It's on the second line, or it says, not full, it's missing an A.
Yep, right in the first paragraph after Section 18-1.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Cold stuff?
That's final secretary as well.
Wow, that was quick. And to address Mr. Blair's comments, what I would, what I would like is, because this is a first reading, it's the first time this has been dispersed to the public, so I'm sure we'll probably get some other questions or comments about the ordinance prior to its full approval next week. If, it might be easier if you could, if anyone could email your concerns and comments to all of council, and if, and if I receive it, I mean, my, my email address is on our website, all of us is our, but if I receive something that the rest of council doesn't, I always forward it and vice versa. I think that that would probably be a little bit easier, because I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and guess that now that this has been provided to the public, we'll probably get more than, more than just your comments if, if you think that sounds okay. And other than that, I mean, I, I have a few things I kind of wanted to review too, but as far as, other than what, what Mr. Blair or anybody else in the public might bring to our attention before next meeting, I really didn't see anything that was alarming. It's-
I spoke to Rachel about this, because one of the questions that she posed to me was, you know, if we have first reading tonight, does council absolutely have to pass it at the second reading? You would not have to do that. So if you wanted to slow down a little bit, you're perfectly fine. And, you know, if you wanted to take comments or give people an opportunity, we are just rolling this out tonight, to hear some further feedback, that's certainly something that council could do if you would be comfortable with it.
Sure, okay. And I, I can't remember what it was, but there was one, there was an ordinance in the past that we brought to second reading and ended up bringing it back to a third time. I don't remember what it was, but I'd like to keep it on the agenda for our next meeting as a second reading, and then we'll just, we'll just cross that bridge when we get there. If we have enough that we want to change, that you're not comfortable taking it as an accepted second reading with minor adjustments, if it's major enough for you and you want to bring it back a third time, I think that's wise.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Anything else anybody wanted to address on that one before we move on? Thanks. All right, E is the costs and voter turnout of the November 2nd, 2021 election.
Okay, the cost for the November 2nd city election totaled $10,751. The largest expense was the ballots and memory cards at $4,066. Election worker expense was $2,496, which is low because of consolidated precincts and less workers needed for a small election. Also, we didn't have an absentee ballot counting board as we opted to process the absentee ballots in the precincts. The city had 8,585 registered voters at the time of the election, which is an increase of 62 voters since the May election. The voter turnout was 17%, which equals 1,478 voters. Of that total, 861 voters, or 58% were absentee voters. The largest voter demographic at 640, or 43% of the total, was once again comprised of females age 60 and older. Combined precinct four and five, located at the First United Methodist Church, had the highest turnout among the precincts with 657, or 44% of total voters. I did also attach the reports, the voter turnout statistics, which I think are kind of interesting to look at, if you could make sense of it. Could you go to the next slide, Charlie? There you go. So this is voter turnout just by absentees. And then the second one is combined. Any questions or comments on, on that?
One question.
Yeah.
Notice a consistency from 2020 in the absentee ballots, or did it remain about the same?
Yeah, so our absentee voters has continued to increase since it was passed on proposal We used to only have about 200 people on our permanent absentee list, and now we have over 1,800. So every election, we send those 1,800 people and an application for a ballot. We are not automatically sending ballots. We are just sending applications to those people that, that told us they wanted them. So we've been doing that, and we had, we still had quite a few, even though it was a smaller election, so we had more absentees than we had in-person voters. It's the way it's going. We do appreciate everybody that did come out either way and votes. Very much appreciated.
Anna, do you, just one quick question about elections, because it's, because this was, once again, the only thing on the ballot was the city. Is it, if my memory serves, is the window still open for council to switch to odd years? I mean, I'm sorry, to even years? Or is that something that we missed a window?
I think that window is always open.
Always?
That is something that I get asked a lot about. It would be, it would be a cost savings for us, for sure. I mean, we wouldn't have this $10,751 of expense. It would, in order to make that happen, I think somehow we would have to extend a term to-
We understand how-
Yeah, right, right.
It was still an opportunity, so that's fine. I didn't want to get into a big-
Yeah.
-feel about it at this point, and somebody wanted to bring it up at a future meeting. I just wanted to know if that was still an opportunity.
Yeah.
Couldn't remember if there was a window or not.
So we would have actually had this, this election, this whole entire year, we would have had an election. We had the one in May, but only because it was missed on the November of 20 ballot, but other than that, we would have had a year off.
Okay. Thank you. Need to receive and file on that, or is it just informational?
I move we receive and file.
Or.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldorah?
Hi. Thank you. All right, next up is new business. We have a fluoride presentation from Steve Schultz.
I'm just going to do the induction. In response to the current supply shortage and shipping issues experienced worldwide, Suez staff has prepared a presentation for informational purposes to outline the options related to specific chemicals added in the water production process that are not necessarily required by law or by, by permit process or anything like that. This one in question tonight is fluoride. And we have Tuba from New Jersey tuning in from, from Suez, and she's going to do a presentation for us on that tonight.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hello from New Jersey. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, 10 minutes. So I'm from Suez Engineering Department within Technical Services, and I am a support function to any of our Suez contracts within the United States. We have about 67 contracts, so anytime there is an action that, or study that needs to be done, my, me and my team members come in and take a look at the existing operations and find out ways to improve those concerns. So today's discussion will be about discontinuing fluoridation and some action items. Should I share? Oh, okay, awesome. So why add fluoride to water? Water fluoridation, basically just adding very small amounts of fluoride to public water supplies in order to reduce the prevalence of cavities. And this was the primary and the major, most important factor of why we're adding it. It's for oral health. And topical fluoride, which is found in the drinking water, is most effective in children ages 3 through 16, either in the form of drinking water or toothpaste. And fun fact, 1945, Grand Rapids, Michigan, was the first city in the U.S. to add fluoride to their water system, and others followed. And the current CDC recommended level of fluoride concentration, the optimum level, is .7 milligram per liter. And when we looked at- And when we looked at CDC website, which is periodically updated and we have the most recent numbers from 2020, I believe the most recent year, um, full year is that Michigan has a fluoridation rate of 41% of all water systems currently add fluoride as the last step. And that equals to 89% of the entire floor, um, Michigan state population, which means that, um, the bigger the system, the higher the chance of fluoridation. The smaller systems usually tend to shy away from fluoridation that comes with procurement, maintenance, operation. You need more people, you need more budget, so they need to, they are shying away from it. And the .7 concentration that we just talked about, only 31% of the state population have access to optimally fluoridated water. Some of, which is between .6 and 1. Uh, the remainder is falling behind. Either they're adding too little or they're adding too much. Um, and Michigan, Michigan Eagle states that a news release is required if the city is forced to interrupt fluoride addition to inform the public health and professionals. The reason why that box is added is because Alpena this year faced a little bit of scare because they didn't have their fluoride supply. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk about the background, why we had to bring this up today to you. So um, the fluoridation in Alpena basically is done because it is, uh, it was being done before Suez came in. It's not a listed obligation on the current contract. And fluoride all over the United States, it's not a, a mandatory requirement by any state or federal, federal regulatory agencies. And it remains a community decision that council people like you and the town people, they come together and they make this decision to whether fluoride is necessary or not necessary for that community in the drinking water form. And um, Alpena received recognition from Michigan Eagle for maintaining optimal fluoride system for years. So they have been doing this for a very long time and they've been getting knowledge. But lately, they've been experiencing difficulty obtaining the dry powder form from the supplier. And I believe that in July, there was an RFQ out for the, the dry supply and there was only one bidder that responded and that one bidder was awarded. And due to COVID pandemic, not just the dry wa, the dry fluoride, but we're seeing supply chain issues with a lot of the chemicals around a treatment plant. And um, this one came up. So to mitigate this problem, Suez found dry fluoride supply from our other operations around the United States. I think some of them came from northeast to supply Alpena for a couple of more months. I think we have enough supply right now for January to take us through. And we have to make another decision whether to find it from other operations, if they have it or switch the supplier, if there is interest, if there is, you know, supply of dry fluoride in the United States. We have to, we are, we're at this point where we have to make a decision to make sure we either continue with the fluoride or we found a source for it or we discontinue. Next slide, please. So solutions and alternatives, we have three paths to choose from. The current, uh, the number one path is to seek alternative suppliers and void contract with the current supplier since they have not able to fulfill the obligations of their current contract. With this option, the cost may go higher than the previous contract due to shortages and expedited shipments. Because there is a smaller pool to choose from with the dry fluoride suppliers. And the current cost for the powder fluoride is approximately $6,900 per year. And to continue these operations, some of the ongoing maintenance expenses are, you know, multi-gas filters for the operators, maintenance of feed equipment and regular calibration. The expenses under these items are just maintenance and they're recurring. And $6,900 is the main cost per year. And the number two option is to switch from powder fluoride to more available form of fluoride, which is hydrofluorosilic acid, which is a liquid, liquid solution of fluoride. And this is more available and more convenient than the powder form because a lot of the modern treatment plant facilities are moving to liquid injection rather than mixing the powder form into a solution. And this will contain capital costs for engineering design, equipment installation of the retrofitted system for fluoride injection. And I had a preliminary conversation with Fishback Engineering and they were hesitant to give me a price, but we're looking at at least $100,000 for one-time costs. And the estimated cost for the actual supply will go three times higher than the powder form. Um, and with this one, it is a very high risk for our operators. It is considered to be the most toxic chemical in the treatment plant. It requires additional ventilation. So the current space dedicated to fluoride will not be suitable for this. We need to make sure there is enough air switch and ventilation for health and safety of everyone who enters that space. And this upgrade will require Eagle notification and permit approval. It's a pretty standard one. You know, the town would like to stick with the fluoride and a lot of them do go from the dry to liquid. But it will be one-time expense for capital costs and there will be higher recurring expenses, more than the $7,000 that's spent on powdered form per year. And the third option is to discontinue fluoridation altogether. This requires guidance from the Michigan Eagle. Sorry. A public notification by a news release, possibly a local town hall meeting, followed by a council vote. Submit the vote outcome to Michigan Eagle for approval. Michigan Eagle leaves us to the community. Again, it is a community-based decision. There is no regulatory enforcement of fluoride. They, we just have to make sure all parties, all public is informed and there are no objections. If there are objections, they're addressed. Why stop fluoridation? The number one reason that brought this issue up was the global supply chain issues due to COVID impacting the inventory and shipments. And that there is no federal state regulatory requirement for fluoride addition. So removing fluoride from the system doesn't violate any rules and regulations. And if we switch to liquid, um, you know, if we are considering liquid, there is, um, the, the health and safety factor to consider about keeping that form on the treatment plant. The storage, feed and transportation, everyone has to be a lot more careful to get impacted by it. Um, and once it's added, it has to be regulated not to exceed a maximum contaminant level, a level of, of four milligram per liter. So it creates demand for monitoring testing procedures within the treatment plant. By removing that, we are giving more time to our operations team to focus on actual quality of the water. And customers who don't want fluoride have no practical way of removing it. The, the Brita filters that we get from stores don't actually remove fluoride. It might take reverse osmosis to actually remove it. If you don't want it in your system, um, then you'll shy away from tap water, basically. Many more people have access to dental care and dental hygiene compared to 1950s. The reason why fluoride was added was because in the 1950s, not many people had dental hygiene practices in place and, um, access to fluoride or toothpaste. Fluoride wasn't as common as it was today. And the less than 20% of Alpena population is made of ages under 16, which is the critical age period for fluoride benefits. When we think about why the fluoride is added, it is to target the younger people. But if one-fifth of the population is only benefiting from the fluoride addition, uh, that's another thing to consider. And uh, like I said before, there are many everyday alternatives to consume fluoride. Toothpaste, mouth washes, nutrition, soft drinks, juices. We have a lot of sources for it besides tap water. 11% of non-fluoridated water systems in Michigan are made up of less populated municipalities. So that also puts Alpena in this category where, um, smaller the municipality, the, the less likely fluoridation will take place because of the higher per capita fluoridation cost plus smaller staff operations. It puts the, the burden on the existing staff. And um, another fact is that less than 10% of water usage is for drinking water. The rest is for non-potable usage such as showering, toilets, laundry, kitchen, like washing dishes. 10% of the water that we actually consume, we consume it orally. And Alpena receives customer service calls voicing concerns about fluoride addition and fluoride chemical safety data. So in the past, there has been inquiries into the fluoride being added into the, the tap water. And um, I think it's documented or Steve or Mike could elaborate more on that. But it seems like it caught some, um, some people's attention. And um, I just don't know the makeup of Alpena that much to, you know, really figure out what the concerns of the, the residents are. But this seems to be a topic. So next one, please. If we're going with number three, which is the de-fluoridation, this is continuing fluoride entirely, there are a couple of steps that needs to be taken that Michigan Eagle wants us to do, which is meeting up with Michigan Eagle to identify those critical steps and determining the internal strategy for how do we notify, notify the public, what kind of outreach that we do, what kind of information we present to them. And then distribution of advance notice to consumers and medical professionals. This includes the dentists and hospitals. And council meeting, discussion and council vote to determine outcome and circle back with Eagle and notify them of the governmental action. These are all the alternatives that we have and action items that are attached to each of those alternatives. And again, this is not fluoride is right or wrong. This is about what is right for the community? What does, um, Alpena need at this point to continue their water treatment? Um, whether fluoride will be a recurring topic in these meetings because we either don't have, um, we don't have access to it due to supply chain or it has to be another meeting about upgrading the facilities to a more modern system and spending a little more or just this continuation of it and see what the concerns and what the questions from the public will be. I hope I can walk for minutes.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. And the mics, if they have anything to add, the, either mics, please, Mike. Okay, just here is representatives.
Any top questions?
In the, in the 35 years that I've been involved in Alpena, I've never had one comment from, from the public that they liked fluoride in their water. Uh, I've had many comments that they dislike adding things to the water that aren't necessary. So that's just a historical perspective of what I've seen. Not a lot of comments. There were a number of chiropractors that were very vocal that they did not want fluoride added to the water because they felt that there was an imp, a negative impact on the skeletal structure of, of humans caused by fluoride. I do want to say that we have had a very, very good record of maintaining the optimum concentration of fluoride in the system. We've actually received awards, uh, from the Michigan Dental Association and from Eagle. And they actually, because of our good record, they presented us with a grant to, to buy new fluoride, powdered fluoride, um, addition equipment. So that's, that's not really a problem. The biggest problem we have is we're, we're forced with a decision that we have to make because we don't have powdered fluoride available. So it may be a decision that's forced upon us unless the council wants to continue. They think that the public is, thinks that it's a benefit enough that they want to continue. Then it's going to mean this pretty substantial investment in, in new equipment. And we really, we wanted to present all of the information so the council could make an informed decision. It might not be a bad idea to have a, a public hearing and publicize it and see if there's any negative comments about not fluoridating the water.
I, um, thank you, Mike. I, I certainly appreciate that. And I always appreciate public input and professionals' input. So, so just from my personal perspective, um, kind of feel like this might be a blessing in disguise. I, I get a lot of negative, well, when I say a lot, by compared to any other topic, it's probably easily in the top 10 of negative comments I get via email or, um, or otherwise is the fluoride in the water. So, so I really, I honestly don't have an issue with de-fluoridization and pursuing that. But doing it correctly, um, I don't, I think a public hearing might be, might be the, the best way to do it. My only apprehension is, is that are we, i- is there going to be? I don't want to have a public hearing to have a public hearing. I don't want to sound horrible, but i- if that's the direction we're going to have to go because we can't get it. Unless some, unless we want, unless we would expect that there would be an incredible outcry to keep it, that we would, that we would potentially invest that significant amount of money and then put employees at risk at the same time with the hazardousness of the liquid. I, I guess I'm, I'll leave that up to perspective, but.
Question I would have in this is since we provide water to the township, would that also include the township residents and, well, uh, city residents?
We never exclude anyone from a public hearing, to be honest with you. But, um, but it, you know, it may be best, i- if, if nothing else, it, it would be a, um, it would be educational for all of us and anyone else to have, to have some dialogue about it, so.
I told Rachel today that, that I do have some background in the conversion from the powder to the liquid back years ago up in Ken Ross. They had converted to the liquid, but quickly determined that it was quite corrosive. And uh, they suffered a lot of workman's comp claims because of it, it's like this, in that, in that nature. And uh, to come down to the fact that it really wasn't a requirement both by federal and state standards. It's like this, it wasn't worth the cost to workman's comp, the he, uh, health of the individuals, the cost of the equipment, uh, everything else that was all told into it like this. The return just wasn't there for it, so.
So in order to have a public hearing, what's the, what is, what's the timeline look like to, to do that? Unless there's, is there, is there any issues with having a public hearing and moving forward?
No, do, do we have to like meet with Eagle first and, and start?
That can kind of be done. I think they're, they're not necessarily steps in that order. We, we kind of know some of those steps. We know that we have to, to meet with those representatives. I think that can be done in a timely fashion, you know, between meetings or whatever. You know, initially we were thinking that we had enough time to maybe just even give you a chance to kind of mull it over and think about it. You know, but you could call a public meeting for the, the next, you know, the second meeting in December. And in that meantime, we can certainly send some emails.
Right. And I think there's a distinction here between a public hearing and a public meeting.
Right.
To, you know, one, that's we have to notify in a certain amount of time. But I don't know that Eagle has specific requirements. That's something we could certainly confirm, but I would think having a, um, what they suggested, a town hall meeting or just an opportunity for public input on this specific subject at the next meeting would be good.
Yeah. Just have it as an agenda item, not a, not, I don't think it has to go as far as our typical public. You know, hearings where we have to have a 10-day, you know, advertising period or whatever. This is, you know.
Right.
Because we give the public an opportunity and they know about it ahead of time, which they certainly will.
I think that's really good information that maybe it'd be helpful if we put it out on our website and our Facebook page for the public's review.
Yeah, definitely. Sounds reasonable?
Yeah.
It has a Suez trademark on it, so I'll have to make sure that they're okay with that.
I can certainly send us out to the media afterward.
Sure. All right. Well, let's start that step. Steve, appreciate it. Thank you, Mikes. Thank you, Mikes. All right. Next up is the citywide boiler inspection bid recommendation from Steve as well.
Okay. On November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the city received an open bids for the citywide boiler inspections. Bids were sent to four firms as well as posted on the city's website with one bid received as follows. Um, and there's, I'm not gonna read them all off. There's a table there outlining their costs from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. Um, they compare uh, quite nicely with the, the previous contract. Um, and you know, they, they've done this before for us. Wyancoff has done this work for us before. Um, the intent of the project is to perform annual boil inspections in accordance with the two thousand nine Michigan Boiler Code Rule twenty seven, which requires a service technician to be certified to perform the annual testing. This is, you know, this came about, like it says, in, in oh nine. So it was something that we could do by ourselves before, but now it's something that we, we can't, we can't do this on our own. So we have to hire it out, this portion anyway. Uh, the state of Alpena shall have the right to extend this contract for one additional three-year period if both parties can mutually agree upon prices. And in all case, shall it be, shall it be extended beyond December thirty first of twenty twenty seven. It's my recommendation as city engineer that we award the citywide boiler inspection contract to Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating at the prices listed above. Uh, Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating holds all the required mechanical licensing for the inspections.
Steve, I've got a couple of questions. As you would. Um, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't like the single bids. Have we reached out to the, the other bidders? Do they even have the required credentials to bid on this? I mean, or, or is there others that they could recommend within the state?
Yep. They, um, they all do. And what we found out is um, the, we didn't get a call back from uh, one of them. Uh, there was another one in West Branch that they just said it's too far. They come and go uh, back and forth. Um, one of the ones that has bid on this before, one of our local bidders uh, indicated us today that they did not get the, the email or did not know that it was out for bid. Um, we checked the email address that we sent it to. They said that that was the correct one. And we show where we sent it. So I, I don't know, got lost in, in somewhere. But they, they did, you know, they, they bid in two thousand sixteen against Wyancoff and Wyancoff got that bid also, so.
Any other questions or issues? Okay, a motion to. Care of that. Osmer. You made the motion. So move.
Osmer.
Mr. Osmer. I'm just selecting now. If I move.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora. And Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Motion great.
Thank you. Uh, next is the bagged leaf and lawn material pickup bid recommendation. Steve as well.
All right. On November fifteenth as well, uh, we received uh, an open bids for the bagged leaf and lawn material pickup services for twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Bid documents were sent to five vendors and also posted on the city's website with one bid received as follows. Uh, A one tree service for twenty two, twenty three and twenty four were ten thousand one hundred dollars per, per pickup. We usually schedule for four. We end up doing five generally. Um, if the budget allows for a total of forty thousand four hundred per year. Um, that's in line with the last two years of the, the previous contract. So A one tree service has provided outstanding service as well as exceptional working relationship for many years to the city, providing stump grinding services as well as previous, previously providing bag lawn material pickups throughout the city. As there has been no increase from last year of the previous contract as well as no increase for years twenty three and twenty four of the proposed contract, it's my recommendation as city engineer that city council award the bagged leaf and lawn material pickup to A one tree service for the as bid prices listed above. Funding has been established in the Public Works budget for the service.
I recall, Steve, when we started uh, outsourcing this, we were, we did a study, basically, this is years ago on, you know, the cost versus city services.
Yeah.
Doing this. And there was the opportunity cost of things that they couldn't be doing because of the time that it, that it took. Um, have we, do you recall or have any information on when that was done? No?
I don't, I don't write off.
Okay.
Sure, we could dig it up. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is, this is ugly work.
Yeah.
No, I mean, there's, there's another contractor that had bid on this previously and they're, right now they're out of business. Um, this is just, yeah, you're opening up every, you're touching every bag of leaves that somebody has put together, opening it up, dumping it, discarding the bag, transporting all those leaves. It's, yeah.
It's not pretty work.
No.
We're just trying to, for the public's information, just to kind of establish why we went this way and.
Yeah.
And, you know, the cost savings that we did realize at that time, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we struggle even now um, for, for the uh, the brush pickup to get the crew and get enough people to be doing that. And then to add this to it, I think that was a lot of it too, is that we struggled just with the brush pickup because that's a lot of work for us to get through.
No other questions, Mr. Mayor?
None.
I move that we award the contractor, we pick up to A one tree service at the uh, prices listed for twenty two, twenty three and twenty four.
Second.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Haslam. Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Johnson. Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion great.
I move we adjourn to closed session for a continued discussion on the sale of city-owned property located at US twenty three north.
Councilman Asmer.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Right. And our online viewers and perhaps media have probably seen that there's possible action on this after uh, we resume. So I don't know, uh, in the event that that happens, Rachel, is there, is there a press release? A press release has been, will be um, provided. So to kind of keep you from hanging on the line all this time, if you'd like. It's funny, last time we went into closed session, you were ready to get it. So we're back in, uh, we're back in uh, open session? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. All right. One, one still with us. All right, go ahead. We, we do have some action to take care of um, uh, beforehand. So when you're ready. The topic is, I don't even, lost my agenda, so thank you, sir. So the, the topic was uh, uh, the sale of city-owned property located on US twenty three north. And go ahead, Bill.
So the first motion for council's consideration would be to approve as written the purchase and sale agreement between GT Equities LLC and the city of Alpena and authorize Mayor Walagora to sign same on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second motion would be to agree, or excuse me, to approve the buy and sell agreement between PCI and the city of Alpena with two modifications. One, that the requirement that the city uh, provide at the city's expense, a survey within thirty days of the date that disagreement is signed under section five would be removed. And second, that the date for the written acceptance's offer would be extended under paragraph twenty four from December first of twenty twenty one to December tenth of twenty twenty one. And also to authorize Mayor Walagora to sign on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Third motion for council's consideration would be to approve uh, as written, the agreement between WSSALLC and the city of Alpena for the purchase and sale of the property noted in that with one uh, change. And that is that the city would reserve the discretion to move the proposed three acre site from the north side of North Industrial Highway as presented in the purchase and sale agreement to the south side of North Industrial Highway. And further, uh, once again, that Mayor Walagora have authority to sign on behalf of the city of Alpena.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer. Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
And Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
We can adjourn. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Third.